William Hinn. Joanne Eaton. Police Sergeant Ears. Robert Momarts.
Here.
Rochelle Getmester.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Here.
Jim Sattell.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Beth Moiski.
Here.
Trinny Liz Cross. Planner Clay Fox.
Next, we have public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the December 4, 2012 minutes. Anyone have any comments, questions about the minutes from December 4th? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Momarts, second by Commissioner Ricker. All those in favor? Opposed? Next on our agenda is the continued discussion of the transportation plan. Because I guess my own take on this is that our goal tonight is to send the town board some feedback on the transportation plan. We're not voting per se on anything. We're just strictly providing a list of comments. And I think those comments could range from anywhere from start over to here's a good base and let's build on that and here's our comments and agreements and disagreements. That's where we are tonight. I'd like to suggest that we try to pick up from where we were at our last meeting, incorporate some new materials that have come to us in the interim, but not necessarily go over everything that we went through on December 4th since that was a late meeting. So Alex, you want to...
Alex Aronello, Director of Public Works and Utilities. And what I'm going to do tonight, we heard a lot of comments at our last meeting and we've gotten additional comments from some other, from Rochelle and from Rochelle Horton. So we wanted to go over some ideas we have for making some changes to the draft plan and going forward with the public process to incorporate some of your feedback into what we take out to the public. So I have a few things. These are kind of the focus areas, things that we heard that we're not in the plan and we'd like to provide some more additional information and apologize for this PowerPoint. We can provide copies, email this to you. Like most presentations, it was done like we'd like. But we're just compiling data to address some of these concerns. One was what's going on at US 36 and the McAslin interchange? Are we addressing the safety problems up there and so forth?
Can you hit the lights, please?
The next was, our biggest issue is Marshall McAslin and the interchange. Has all that worked together? You really cover that well enough in the plan? So we have some ideas on how to expand the discussion. Want to talk roundabouts and possibly roundabout at McAslin and Coal Creek, 76th Street, what's happening with 76th Street? There's no discussion. There's bicycle issues and so forth. Other intersections and we want to present some ideas I had on maybe look at it from a more comprehensive fashion. Intersections in town and how they stack up against each other to rate them and maybe look at evaluations for needed improvements. There was discussion of speed limits and then we have an update on neighborhood electric vehicles. So I wanted to talk about some of the things that we heard from you and I think we had sent you a memo on this. It's what we had heard at the last meeting where that generally you were in favor of roundabouts on McAslin, but they need to be individually examined to make sure that they were the appropriate locations. And you'd like to see examination of data on superior existing roundabouts as well as safety generally throughout town. That's what I want to talk about. Intersections, we're going to collect data, we're going to collect for all intersections, not all intersections, but the major intersections in town. We heard that you were generally in favor of medians on McAslin, but they're not as high priority as roundabouts. And you're generally not in favor of roundabouts on Rock Creek Parkway. And you'd like to see some level of service graphic for the entire town. And we're going to do that both on an intersection level and on a segment level. Those are the comments I heard. We received a lot of comments from Rochelle. I'm going to address some of those tonight as well as Rochelle Horton had an email. So she provided some comments. So as I go through, I'm going to pick up on some of the themes that I heard and how we're going to revise our plan before we go out to the...
Alex, one thing that's just sort of come to mind as I think about the transportation plan and people come forward with details, details, and then all of a sudden we have lots of requests for details, next number of roundabouts here, roundabout here, roundabout there, widening here, left turn here, right turn there, traffic lights here. Is that the intent? I guess I want to really understand what the intent of the transportation plan is. Is it to be so detailed that we're actually defining where roundabouts are going to go, where additional lanes are going to go, whether we have three left turn lanes, whether we're going to put in the diverging diamond, whether we're going to... Is that the intent? Because when I think about the comprehensive plan, things are a little bit more...
A little broader.
Right? A little bit broader. Having policies that allow us to be flexible enough to do what's appropriate to be done within a scope that our community feels is important. Can you? I guess I'll start by, could you elaborate a little bit about what the intent is?
Our original intent, you normally not have that type of detail in a transportation plan. It's more number of lanes, the classification, local collector arterial. That's the type of thing you'd see in a transportation plan. On McAslin, we wanted to develop a vision. Do we want to just leave it as a rural highway or do we want something else? That's what we brought forth, the roundabout concept and the median concept. And we had this vision that we thought we'd incorporate into the transportation plan. I think that is a very long-term project. You don't build that overnight. So if we're going to have that vision, I think that's appropriate to have it in the comprehensive plan because then we can start as we do our CIPs, our five-year CIPs and so forth. We have that in vision every time we make an improvement on McAslin. We have that vision in mind. So I think that's appropriate. The turn lanes, speed limits, obviously those are getting a little more detailed than we probably need to do. I think the comments on Marshall McAslin are appropriate because that's the key intersection in town. And if that's not functioning, we need to know because that kind of limits the amount of development in town center and other areas if that's not functioning well. So those comments are appropriate and we have a lot of work already done on that so we can bring that forward and include that and not show that we haven't addressed it in the plan.
And then can you...
So I think speed limits probably not appropriate. Turn lanes, most of the... We're not adding hardly any turn lanes anywhere really. Traffic signals, normally you wouldn't find that in the plan, but we're a small town. It's easy enough to make those determinations.
So is it appropriate to ask these guys to help us balance, make sure we're not moving into too much detail?
I think we can do whatever we want.
We can't, but I wanted to understand.
Just to maybe make sense that let's deal with the big items like congestion and emptying town center and flow on McAslin and maybe if we approach it that way, we can make more headway.
I think this...
So I'm with you.
I think this list of items here is a good starting point for us to perhaps further define that and just have that be a running list of what planning commission is in favor of, not in favor of, that sort of thing.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to address some of these and then some of the other comments we had. I wanted to just start with the US 36 and McAslin interchange because one of the comments, feedback we got was, well, what are you doing? We have these safety issues at the interchange and are you addressing them with the DDI? And so when we began, the DDI style wasn't DDI, was what do we do with the interchange? What improvements could we do with the interchange? And what we had given a charge to our consultants and project team was that we had the northbound left. This was a major issue, not only from a congestion standpoint, but from a safety standpoint. As you recall, we put a protected left turn lane, a protected left turn operation at this traffic signal two or three years ago because we were experiencing an accident every month at this intersection. We're still having accidents even though we have protected operations. So this was, yes, this is a safety issue and that was one of the things we wanted to look at when we improve it to... And that's always been why we looked at the northeast loop because you would take those left turns out and make them right turns. And essentially that's what the DDI does, is take those left turns out. So we knew we had a problem here. We also have more of a perceived problem, but the merge from turning right onto McAslin coming off the eastbound ramp and then you have traffic flying over the bridge and this weave is a perceived accident problem. There are accidents that occur, but certainly not as many as up in that area. So we had identified that as a particular problem. And so the way we are addressing that are twofold. We've taken the left turns out of here. We put them back here and we have a two-phase operation. So we're separating the left turns in time and more through movements and left turn movements. So you come through here and then you have a free left turn onto the ramp. So we feel we've alleviated this problem by separating the left turns from the through traffic. The other question was, are we solving this? And one of the reasons why I was sold on the DDI is that we had an opportunity here to signalize the off-ramp operation and basically alternate flow between the ramp coming down and the traffic coming off the bridge. So we're going to have a traffic light here. So you're going to be stopped. You're going to wait for this traffic to go and then that stops and then you go here. So we're not going to have that weave situation again. So I don't know if that was clear, but we'll have a discussion of the safety benefits of the DDI in our transportation plan. The other thing, and I know I got criticized before for using other accident data from other jurisdictions, but our DDI is safer. And since not too many have been built in the country, we don't have a whole lot of data, but Missouri did an accident investigation of an interchange where they had three or four years of accident data before the DDI was installed. And then what happened after the DDI installed? Was it safer afterwards? And their experience was that accidents went down by almost 50% in the first year, that the left turn type crashes were eliminated because we're taking them away. They're not crossing the through traffic anymore. You still have rear end crashes, but they went down slightly. And then the crossover intersections had the normal traffic, accident pattern that you would see with all singleized intersections where people run the line or they stop short and you have rear accidents. So overall, for at least this particular study, it seemed like DDI's did have a positive impact on safety. So we'll bring out that discussion of why we're doing the DDI and why they're solving some of the safety issues that we had identified. We had an issue, there's no talk about Marshall McAslin, what happened to the Triple F? What's going on? It was silent on that issue. So I want to just bring you up to speed about what's going on with that. We had put that Triple F project on hold for several reasons. One, the town board was concerned about taking landscaping out for a traffic lane. Secondly, when we started getting into the interchange project, we wanted to make sure whatever we did in Marshall McAslin, we'd coordinated with the DDI improvements. And thirdly, the town center came along and we started looking at the traffic analysis for the town center. Because of all those issues, we kind of put things on hold with Triple F. Well, most of those things are resolved now because we have the DDI design. The town center has gone through the process and we have the traffic numbers. And so we started looking at, all right, what do we do now? Does Triple F make sense? So we started looking at, and this started occurring just a month or so ago, what are we going to do? So we've developed kind of an interim plan to do a Triple F in the short term and then ultimately what do we need when the town center goes? What's the ultimate footprint of the intersection? And so I wanted to show you and you can give me feedback, is this appropriate to put in the transportation plan? So one concept we're talking about now, instead of taking the lane, the new lane out of the median, let's take it out of the right turn lane. And so here's the two existing left turn lanes and this is currently the through lane. So we'll convert that through lane to a left turn lane. So that's your Triple F. Then the right turn lane will convert to a through lane and then we'll build a new slip lane for the right turn movements. So that's one concept we had and then we're just kind of exposing it to the public, does this make sense? There are some difficulties with this in that you're in a through lane and that through lane is now becoming a left turn lane. And so you have to actually move over to the right if you want to go through the intersection. So it's kind of worried about that, but there are other situations like that and that through movement right now is very low. It's 30 to 50 vehicles an hour now. In the future with the town center, it may go up to a couple hundred, but certainly that's a minor movement at that intersection. The major movement is a left turn and a right turn. So the right turn, we can do this physically. It does take some landscaping, but there's two rows of trees, so we take a few trees out, but we're able to do that. So I'm going through the process of presenting it to you, to the town board. Is this a concept that's better than the other concept? And is this doable? At the same time, now we know what we're planning on the McAslin from Marshall up to the interchange. And one thing that we've planned through the interchange are bike lanes. So we don't have bike lanes in this stretch either. We have bike lanes down here. We have bike lanes on Lewisville side and then we're putting bike lanes across the bridge. So what do I do in that stretch there to accommodate bicyclists? And so here's a concept for moving the curb out and providing some additional width for the bicyclists here and then a bicycle lane down here. They're also going to be ripping out the, some of the median, reconfiguring the median. While we're doing this, let's pull out the median here, narrow down that median and set up a potential double left for the town center. We might as well do those improvements now in conjunction with the DDI. So we have this thing set up for the town center and a double left. So these are improvements that we probably should do in conjunction with these improvements. That's kind of the short-term thing. Now, what are we going to need ultimately with this intersection? And so we'll have double left here. We may need a double left westbound coming out of the town center. And the other thing we may need is another through lane northbound. So here's more improvements and it could be replacing this pole, putting an island here for the free right turn lane, making improvements on this approach on Marshall and then extending the right turn lane and making it, taking it back quite a bit so we have more capacity there. So I wanted to bring this forward to the town board saying, what do you want to do now? Do you want to make some interim improvements? Do you want to set up for the long term? Maybe we need to go and get some additional funding to do these things. And by the way, why don't we overlay the intersection so we have a nice intersection with the DDI? So it's like kind of snowballed and so I'm just bringing this forward to you and the town board that this could be the ultimate and how do we get there with the DDI? So chew on that a little bit and think about whether we should include that discussion in the transportation plan. Okay. Rochelle brought the concept of a roundabout at Coal Creek at McAslin. And as you pointed out, some advantages, you could have traffic calming on McAslin. As you approach the Marshall McAslin intersection from the south, you can start slowing traffic up by having a roundabout there. Same concept that we had with the town center roundabout. You would allow all movements at Coal Creek and that's been kind of bone of contention for some people. And then I don't... She had talked about facilitating emergency access. I didn't know whether fire trucks can't make that northbound left into Coal Creek. I've never heard that that was a concern. So I need to investigate that, whether that's an issue now. So disadvantages are, may increase traffic on Coal Creek. And we've heard from the residents of Coal Creek, they don't want any more traffic. So by allowing another movement there, it could increase. And there could be queues from the Marshall intersection extending down into this roundabout. And when you have queues extend down into it, you start locking it up and creating some real problems. So I mean, there's good things, bad things for this and I throw these out and if you want me to include this and bring it forward, it's certainly something we could do.
So one additional, you're only adding one additional movement, right? Which is the ability to go left off Coal Creek?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just throw that out here, something that came up. 76th Street, and we didn't have much of a discussion about this and I think it's appropriate to include, what's the future of 76th? As you recall, 76th was designed as a major arterial. It was supposed to go south through the May Hartford property, go up the hill. I mean, it's supposed to be a major four-lane facility. Well, when the May Hartford property became open space, a lot of things happened and all that development that was contemplated is not going to happen now. We don't really need a four-lane section on 76th. We've already made some decisions with Guardian and some of the other properties here. We don't need four lanes going all the way north. So Guardian is only building the section to make it 36-foot wide, basically a collector, 36-foot wide collector, curb and gutter on both sides with sidewalks. So I would assume as this develops, that's the section we would have north of Sagmo. Now, we don't need that four-lane section here and so there's a couple of options we could do. We could restrip 76 from Sagmo to Coal Creek and consider either on-street bike lanes or on-street parking. Don't really need parking along here, along Costco. Don't really need it here, but we don't know what's going to happen in some of these areas, but that may be one. Or maybe just strip it as a bike lane. This is a striping diagram I developed this five or six years ago about what to do with the four... We don't need four lanes on this section of 76th Street and can we utilize that pavement some other way? And do we need parking along here for the park? Talking to Martin, it's a neighborhood park. We don't want people coming from the outside, so we don't want parking here, but there's plenty of pavement to do something there. And so we can go out and get some comment, what should the future of 76th Street be? Okay. Intersection analysis, based on the comments that we had before, have we really looked at other parts of town? We looked at roundabouts on McAslin, roundabouts on Rock Creek Parkway. What about all the other intersections in town? And I think it's valid that we do a more comprehensive analysis of intersections. And so we did between our last meeting, go out and collect traffic data on High Plains, on Christiansen, on Indiana and several other intersections to see what are the movements? We did AM morning and PM turning movements. And once you get turning movement data, you can do your analysis for delays, level of service and so forth. So we've collected that data. We have data on a lot of other intersections in town. And so what we could do is collect accident data. We have some of that and it's still kind of sketchy, but combining accident data with traffic volume data allows you to calculate accident rates. And that's how you can then rank intersections by accident rate because you're taking into account the volume. If you have one accident in a low-volume intersection, is that a high accident rate or not? So calculate accident rates. We can calculate vehicle delay and level of service. Then we can start ranking intersections by level of service delay and accident rate. And then that would give us, well, here's the highest, the worst intersections and then go out and is there anything we can do with those intersections to make improvements? And the intersections that we could look at are depicted here and are basically the major arterial intersections as well as local intersections that intersect the arterials. And as you notice here, we have, the ones we have discussed, Indiana, Christiansen, High Plains along here on, I want to throw in the 88th intersections. It's pretty high volume. Throw in the Coal Creek, Pitkin, Coal Ridge and then Tyler. So how do they rank up? So we have most of the data. We need accident data, it's a little sketchy, but we'll try to include a more comprehensive analysis of those intersections. Speed limits, again, this is probably not to me appropriate to discuss in the transportation plan, but I know Rochelle Horton, that was one of her issues, that we need to do something about the speed limits. And some of the criteria you want to use when you set the speed limits, of course, you look at the design speed, you look at the character of the road, but then you look at the 85th percentile speed, which kind of tells you whether the motoring public thinks, they feel comfortable traveling at a certain speed. And that's often influenced by the posted speed, but a lot of times you can find roads that are over-designed and the speed limit's too low. For example, Colton, right now, we found the speed limit was, the 85th percentile of speed was much higher than the posted speed, because it's long and straight. There's separated sidewalks, there's bike lanes. It's like, why is this road posted so low? But other roads like Indiana are, the 85th percentile speed was very close to the posted speed. So people tend to think, well, this is more residential character road, so I'm going to travel a little wider. So the other thing is, just changing the speed limit is not going to change speeds. People are not, just because of speed. It really depends on the design speed of the road and how fast you comfortably can go. So a lot of it has to do with enforcement, especially around school zones. 20 miles an hour is really slow, but when the sheriff's out there all the time and you get $100 a ticket for doing it, you have to pay attention. So I think we have collected data and we will collect data. I think that issue is more appropriate for the Traffic and Safety Committee to review the data, review requests for lowering the speed limit. It's not really appropriate for the transportation plan other than division from McAslin. What do we want? Do we want a rural, open highway or do we want to lower the design speed by medians, roundabouts or some other mechanism? All right.
Oh, yes.
Your turn.
So last time we were here, we were able to share with you a little bit about some alternative vehicles, neighborhood electric vehicles, things like that that might be appropriate. She needs to state your name. Sorry.
Sorry. State your name and position.
Lisa Rati, Management Analyst, Town of Superior. So as we shared with you, LSE did a bit of an analysis of Superior facilities in 2009. The most important thing to consider is the speed differential between different users. So we do have a bit of an update on things that we've learned or that I have learned over the last few weeks. There are currently some alternative vehicles that are allowed in town. Low-power scooters being one of them and those are kind of that Vespa-type scooter that you see. Those are allowed in every Colorado municipality unless they're prohibited by the municipality. And Superior has not prohibited these, so these are allowed. Typically have a top speed of around 40 miles an hour. They do not include, I know Commissioner McPoole, you were asking about some of the toy scooters potentially. Municipalities need to allow those and Superior has not. So at this point, if that's not something that we have really looked into, if that's something that you'd like some direction on, we could do that. Whether or not that's a safe, good idea for our community, we'll get your feedback on. The other thing, which I apologize, I was not aware of last time, is that segways already are allowed in the Town of Superior. They are not allowed on... They are not allowed on any roadways. So Colorado statutes has what they would recommend, but Superior adopted an ordinance in 2009 regarding segue use in town. Obviously, there's little, if any, of this used by residents, so, you know, I don't know if we need to really look at this any deeper. We'll get your feedback on that. Electric bicycles are also, they were also passed in 2009. They're regulated the same as bicycles. So anywhere a bicycle can travel, an electric bicycle can travel. Anywhere a bicycle can't, that type of thing. These, I feel would be a good option for Superior. Superior's fairly hilly, got a lot of topography around here that, you know, the hill on McCaslin, things like that, that use of electric bicycle may be a good alternate for residents. Golf cars, golf carts would be the alternate vehicle that at this point, on our preliminary examination, would be probably the easiest and most accommodatable. I was able to speak with Boulder County Sergeant Jim Chamberlain. Boulder County currently enforces a similar regulation in the Town of Lyons, so they do have familiarity with golf cart use within their jurisdiction. They have some recommendations for how that they would, how they would get used in Superior. They would be allowed on streets with a speed limit of thirty miles per hour or less. Not allowed on trails or paths, except in marked and identified areas. And they may cross streets with speed limits greater than thirty miles per hour at marked locations. So this map is kind of hard to see, but this is essentially showing where they could travel. And there's pretty good connectivity through town as it is. But in order to do golf carts, we would need to do a few improvements in order to make connectivity complete. The first one being the speed limit on Rock Creek Circle. The pink road is currently thirty-five miles an hour. That would need to be reduced to thirty to get that speed differential lower so that they could travel. They could not travel on Colton or Rock Creek. We would have to do marked crossings there. And then we would have to allow a connection on the trail system behind and through Safeway so that they could access some of those stores.
Sorry, did you say they could, what I wrote down here?
Yeah.
Does it take a travel on roads thirty-five miles per hour and lower?
Thirty miles per hour less, yeah. So that would need to occur. We could accommodate, you know, some golf cart use through selected trail striping to separate uses, signage, that type of thing, or widening trails if necessary. The other area which would need some accommodation, until the Town Center connection is made, there would be no golf cart connectivity through any of Original Town and Sagamore to Rock Creek. So the connection that, at this point, we feel would be, oh, that would be accommodatable and to keep traffic, or keep golf carts off of the heavier traveled Marshall, would be to align them through this potential underpass here and then to the back, back access to the Town Center. This does allow connectivity through all of Original Town and Sagamore, through Coal Creek Drive or Sycamore, and then they could cross to get over to Whole Foods and things like that. So this does allow for connectivity as well as then reducing the speed limit on Coal Creek Drive down to thirty from thirty-five to allow access back in through here. The other trail connection that we would need to do is the Waterford Neighborhood. Its only access out is over Rock Creek. So instead of having them cross necessarily here, we could look at a trail connection, which would also then allow golf cart access through Purple Park. So, you know, those are just some details that, that would need to be considered if we want to look at neighborhood vehicles, alternate neighborhood vehicles, just some things to consider.
Okay, and then based on some of the feedback that we had last, last month about only one public meeting, you know, maybe you really have to expand the process, we've, we're proposing that we have to have at least two community meetings in January and a potential one in February if needed. And we think of maybe actually having a meeting for the original Superior and Sagamore residents and really, you know, going over the whole plan, but really focusing on, you know, the interchange area, Marshall-McCaslin, what do we do with Seventy-sixth, the issues on Coal Creek Drive, the truck traffic on Sycamore Seventy-sixth. So really look at, at the traffic issues that we have in original Superior and have a, you know, kind of a community meeting, focus on, on those issues and getting feedback from Sagamore and Original Town residents, you know, what, what's going on here? What are the traffic issues? And tell us about them. Here's, here are some issue, things we can propose, but, you know, try to get the feedback from that area. The other meeting would be focusing on Rock Creek area and on McCaslin corridor vision. You know, you know, a lot of people are back up to McCaslin and people that use McCaslin, and focusing that meeting on those types of issues. We'd still cover a lot of the overall transportation plan, have boards and stuff, but we just have focus issues on those two different meetings and maybe have one down at the fire station and one in Town Hall to separate them. And these would be kind of listening meetings, you know, hear some stuff out there. What do you think? What are the traffic concerns that you have? You know, tell us about them. And so we would, you know, listen to the people, but also present some, some options to some of the things we've talked about, get their feedback, and then, oops, either have another meeting back in March or, you know, use those to come to the planning commission, bring all that input back. So it's kind of what we're proposing to try to address some of the issues that we heard last, last time. So anyway, I mean, that's the thinking we had based on the discussion you had last meeting and the feedback we got from some of the public.
Okay, very good. Appreciate the, all the follow-up. One question I had was the, the transportation plan that's in tonight's packet is different than the one that was in the December fourth packet. And I'm wondering, is the one, is the one that we have in tonight's packet just pieces of the other one? Because there's, there's.
No. It was a PowerPoint that you used, the December fourth, that's what we included.
Are you talking about the?
We didn't actually include the actual plan in the packet.
Okay. That's what was in December fourth.
Right.
But this.
This is just the PowerPoint.
Okay.
I gave you a PowerPoint from last time because you hadn't seen that before.
Okay.
And so if you wanted to study the issues in the PowerPoint.
Okay. It had elements of the plans, I'm thinking it's, so I just wanted to make sure I was clear on what I was looking at. Okay, thanks. Why don't we go through questions or comments from the board? Just maybe give me a little hand raise, I'll identify you and go from there. Commissioner Abdul-Williams.
I just have one quick question regarding the neighborhood vehicles. It seems so futuristic to me, but how's the operation going to be, work out? It's going to be like a rental? It's going to be like a parking for those vehicles?
You are correct. There would be a lot to consider. In the Town of Lyons, what they have seen, since they've implemented this in 2010, is that they have seen quite a few residents purchase golf carts for use. There's a lot of different options that they also looked at at that time, but they found that that was probably the most affordable option for residents. They're kind of the least expensive option, so that's the one that they concentrated on. We kind of feel probably the same way. As far as if we would do a rental, you know, I can't see that the Town of Superior would, you know, do that if, if a company wanted to come in and establish such a business. You know, we'd probably work with them or, you know, to have discussions on how to handle that, but.
Right, and we haven't thought, we haven't thought this through, this Alex Aronau. You know, the first and final mile are looking at those types of issues, how do you get to the parking ride? We have EGO vehicles and maybe, you know, someone like EGO, maybe we, we have, you know, those, you know, neighborhood vehicles available for rent if that's, you know, looks like it's a market. But definitely in the Town Center, we're going to have different types of vehicles there that may be available for the residents. And that's, you know, once that, that's going to be part of their travel demand, demand management plan when they can afford is to have different ways of getting around without using traditional vehicles. So we may have that golf carts as the route to go, maybe we encourage them to have some golf carts available to their residents and also available through town, you know, in other areas. So that's, that's a good point.
I got a couple of quicks, questions, Alex. As I keep looking at this thing deeper and deeper, I, I'm concerned that the long-range issues of the town might be underserved. And what I mean by that is, is there anything being done like as a current traffic flow pattern study is going on through this deal as it relates to Superior?
In terms of traffic counts, surveys?
Well, counts are one thing.
Right.
And they're actual counts. But then, you know, we have an unusually shaped community, that's the best way I can describe it. And, and people are talking about restricting access here and restricting access there. And I'm just kind of concerned that we probably already have too restricted an access as it is and everybody's trying to cut it down even more. And, you know, we're talking about adding a Town Center to this place and other things going on. Crossing over just Thirty-sixth, we got McCaslin, we got Eighty-eighth. Unless you want to count the stuff that's going on in Brumfield.
Right.
So I, I just, I, you know, I don't know that anybody's looking at the future as much as they're reacting to the present.
Some of that was done during the interchange study because we charged them with looking at other potential connections between Louisville and Superior. And they, remember, they looked at the, the crossing by Dahlia, you know, they looked at that crossing. And we also looked at the potential where the cemetery underpass is, whether that would be, you know, location. And I think we were kind of supportive of that on the other side. It was a fairly expensive thing to do. So, I mean, we, we did look at those things. We do have traffic forecasts for those based on our traffic model that was, that was done. We also looked to the west of the interchange to see whether crossing over there. So we have, we have traffic numbers that were generated by them, but the focus really was relieving the interchange, not to serve the Town Center. I mean, that's, you know, something else. But in that particular study, we, we did provide some of that. And I could, I could, you know, include some of that discussion in the transportation plan, that there were those crossings considered and here's the traffic volumes if you made those, those crossings.
I mean, I've always been concerned because like 128 is a state highway and it's not going to go away today or tomorrow, or ten years or twenty years from now. So it's going to be there whether we like to traffic calm the heck out of McCaslin and hope somebody drives somewhere else. Because my point was that open space, Russell McCaslin is a big monster and is a wonderful thing. But next time you get, get to a street is on Ninety-three. And I don't know how that's going to help progress.
Right, again, as I mentioned before, you have Ninety-three, you have McCaslin, and you have Wadsworth. They're about three, and they're separating what, what, six miles or so, I mean, four miles. I mean, it's quite a distance, whereas most of the other areas are mile, mile spacing of arterials. So fortunately, we have a lot of open space. We have, we have rocky flats, a lot of open areas that if they develop, if those had developed, then we would have been in worship than we, we are now.
Oh, yeah. I'm just, you know, my concern always was the primary, secondary, and feeder routes that go off of this, this flow within Superior itself, the area itself.
And all the regional models say if we had additional lanes in McCaslin, we would have more traffic. And that by limiting it to two lanes, so many, so much traffic enforced down two lanes. And so that traffic's not going to come here, it's going to go somewhere else. And that's what the regional models kind of say. But that's the decision the board had made, and several boards had made. We don't want to expand McCaslin.
All right. Okay. Commissioner Rittner.
So Alex, I, I like a way, a lot of the way this now is looking and feeling as being something that really starts to represent a look at transportation for all of Superior. And I really do appreciate that you took my, my comments, you know, to heart, to, to bring forth something. I, I was not necessarily looking for detailed plans. I brought up, for example, in my email, the, the, the third left turn lane, just as an example, that says, there was really nothing in the original plan that even gave sweeping statements to the, the issues anywhere other than other places. So I do appreciate that and I was not necessarily looking for how we, how we get to some of the detail, but to have at least the, the broad visions put out there, like what you brought up on Seventy-sixth Street and the fact that over time, there, there are things that have changed, that now maybe we need to re-character some of it. We have to also be aware of, you know, with more houses and a park and children, how we want to deal with the eighteen-wheeler traffic, things like that, as things build out toward Marshall Road. The continued challenge we will always have, I think, as a town at Marshall-McCaslin, going to the interchange, adding now, you know, a Town Center into the mix, there are going to be huge challenges. And, and I just felt that to have not even broad statements that, that acknowledge that, that say, these won't be, you know, there will be something continual that has to take place because it's going to be major what happens. So I like the way this is. I think some of the move toward the kinds of meetings so that it, this feels more like a community upward plan rather than, here's a plan and, you know, a top-down kind of thing. I think, I think we now start to bring in more elements where, where it might feel more like a bottom-up kind of plan, which I think is really good. So I, I just appreciate that now it's starting to look and feel like a Superior transportation plan.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate that.
Other comments? I have a couple. The neighborhood electric vehicle memo, very good. I think it's, it definitely speaks to what I was interested in hearing about, golf carts in particular. And I, I think the answer is that this is something that could potentially be implemented sooner rather than later if the town chooses to go forward with it. And I, from my own personal perspective, I see no reason why we shouldn't. It just seems like a real natural fit for our community. On roundabouts, last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about roundabouts, good here, not so good there. I think as part of our comments that we send back, send out of this meeting, it might be useful for us to add a little bit of detail as to why it would be preferred at some locations and not, not others. I heard some good comments from each of the commissioners about, you know, why certain locations were better. So as we wrap up this evening and compile our comments, I'd like to include some of that detail as, so that that can kind of become part of the record and people can build on that as we have these community meetings and Town Board meetings, as we can start to prioritize and say, okay, it, it does make sense for this location and not for others. On McCaslin and the improvements there, I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Ricker said. I'd like to know, I'd like to really understand why we're proposing the changes that we're proposing. Is it for traffic slowing? Is it for traffic deterrent? Or is it aesthetic? Probably a little bit of all of the above, but I think as, I think we, as the community, we all need to be on board with why we're moving forward and make sure that, make sure the community is, is all on board with, with whatever that reason is. So those are my comments. We have a couple of people in the audience who've joined us and might wish to make some public comment, and I think the commissioner would be happy to hear from, from them. Well, hold on just one second. Commissioner.
Frank Williams. One comment that addresses your last, your last point. I was looking at the two diagrams which were provided at our last meeting. One was a 2010 volume forecast, which takes into account McCaslin, and the one for 2035. And if you, if you come down from 128 and just stand on Colton and McCaslin, you basically And if you, if you come down from 128 and just stand on Colton and McCaslin, you basically get a triangle, where if you take Colton to the, to 36, or you take McCaslin to 36, and then the long side of the triangle is 36. So any, any trap, we have to deal with, basically, the traffic coming down from Colton all the way to 36, because it's like a, a triangle funnels into that point. And that's also where we're going to be putting town center. And according to these two charts, the traffic volumes pretty darn near double. It's about 90% increase. And so it seems to me that we've got to recognize the fact that this is how the traffic is going to flow, and we've got to take a functional solution to it. I mean, that's not to say I wouldn't like to have a vision of something aesthetically pleasing as well, but I think we have to definitely focus on the function of it, of moving twice as much traffic. And I don't think these studies take into account town center, what volume might be coming into or flowing out of town center, which may aggravate the, sort of the pinch point, which is McCaslin, 36 interchange, and how all of that flows and empties and drains. But maybe I'm just taking too simplistic a view of it, but that's...
To answer your question, we did take into account the town center.
Okay.
We take, took into account all the vacant parcels that were proposed for some sort of development in the comp plan. What we did scale back was any big increase in, through traffic, traffic that goes through the area. We added, you know, about 3,000 vehicles per day of increase in that traffic, you know, flowing through the area, not stopping in. And that is probably a lot less than what regional models would say. So we're, we're planning for our own traffic. If we get deep growth outside our area that has to go through here, yeah, we, I mean, those, those volumes may be higher. The regional model says they're higher. We've just taken, we're going to plan for our growth and not for the regional growth.
Okay. Thanks. Now, we'd like to welcome public comment, if anyone would like to. If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Patricia Dunham, 3574, here on PCEV. I'm just looking, and I haven't seen on this, and I am new to the area, but where is the Jefferson Parkway in this plan? And how is that affecting us? I'm getting some laughs.
It's south of 128.
So is, are we, are we looking at that in this plan, or are we just expecting that it's going to be outside of what we do?
It's another county.
Okay. And then my other question was about, have you looked at, when you looked at intersections of, I'm always coming down Rock Creek Circle, there's a lot of people who cut through the Walgreens parking lot. And are you guys, like, looking at how that really affects those intersections? I mean, there's a lot of cut-through from, that people come through trying to beat the light. If they think they're going to get caught by the light, they'll go into the Walgreens parking lot, or they'll go into the Walgreens to get across to the Starbucks from the other way, so.
Thank you.
Hello, Michelle Horton, 3341 West Torres. I do apologize for being late, so I didn't see some of the first slides. And I think, unfortunately, they probably addressed some of my biggest concerns. So I just want to kind of reiterate that, I really implore that when you look at your overall plan, and you did reference that, what should we do for specific areas like McCaslin, that you really understand the functionality of certain things like roundabouts, because they are not meant to slow traffic down, they're meant to keep it moving. And other problem with putting in too many roundabouts is it's going to affect things like the Morgul-Bismarck race. They've already alluded to the fact that if there are too many roundabouts, they're going to probably have to look at moving from the town. And we just need to put that into consideration when you think about this. Other than that, I'm just looking forward to keeping an eye on what's going on and trying to get people mobilized for the public meetings. Thanks.
Thanks for coming in. We always welcome public comment. There's always plenty of time for that. Alex, if you, if you wouldn't mind addressing Ms. Dunham's question about Jefferson Parkway, I don't think we gave her a real good answer about what's happening with Jefferson Parkway.
Sure. Well, not the Jefferson Parkway, but there's a Northwest Corridor in the Dr. Cog plan, and the regional forecasts have that regional facility in the plan, okay? And then, as, you know, as I related to you, their forecasts on McCaslin are much higher with that facility and with all the growth that Dr. Cog plans. And so what, again, what we have done here is say, well, we don't know if it's ever going to be built, we don't want that traffic coming through our town, we want to plan for the traffic coming from our parcels, our growth and development. And, I mean, that's, that's how I had approached it. And, I mean, we don't, you know, we don't know if it's going to happen, but the, the regional forecasts show higher volumes than are in our plan.
Okay.
Can I ask you something? We have to make clear that the North West Corridor is not pass through Superior. It's basically over in Brumfield. But we're, what the difficulty is, is whether or not people will use Superior as a cut-through to get to the south part of it without having to go to Brumfield, you know, and then cause this triangle. Their triangle is what's happening. And so, I mean, that's the issue. And I just want to make sure everyone understands that, and the audience as well.
Again, it's not on our plan or on any of our maps, because it's located south of there. We have a policy that speaks to the Northwest Corridor, and what the town's position would be on it, that we want to be involved, but we don't want it coming through town. So we don't want to, I guess, dignify it with saying it's going to happen.
But some of the 2035 projections, would that, would it be fair to say it includes some of the growth that is taking place, for example, Arvada?
Yeah.
Whether there's a Jefferson Parkway or not? Indiana is a major north-south thoroughfare. Don't know where it's going to go in terms of its expansion or not, if Jefferson Parkway doesn't happen, et cetera. But do our 2035 numbers reflect that there's going to be general regional growth, and some of the, some of the traffic will come here? Because we want them to go to our town center, or shop at our Costco, or whatever, right? I mean, we don't want to put a sign up to say, you know, anyone outside of Superior is not welcome to come down McCaslin. That's, that's sort of the impression I'm getting here.
Well, I guess, there's two sides of the coin.
Right, right.
I mean, do we want to accommodate these regional forecasts and build lanes and lanes and lanes? I mean, is that what we want for the town? Or do we want to plan for a reasonable growth and hope that traffic goes somewhere? We do have, in the US-36 interchange study, it was clear that the interchange couldn't handle the 2035 forecast. And so there were some improvements, or what do we do next if, let's say, that traffic materializes? Can you do anything at the DDI to accommodate? And so we do have some improvements. Here's what you would do if you, if you got those far-out forecasts. So that was done for the interchange area. We still have a problem with Marshall McCaslin, because, because that's how to get to it if you can't get through Marshall McCaslin. So we still have that problem, and how much, how many lanes do you want on?
Oh, yeah, there's already so many.
So what I showed you is kind of a, you know, here's kind of maxing out, and, I mean, do we want anything more? I mean, here's what we can do, and it can handle, you know, up to 2032, or whatever, I mean, it can handle quite a bit of traffic, but...
Well, regarding, you know, the 120, let's say the 128 up to Marshall Road, you know, in terms of the projections, again, there, there's going to be a lot of growth happening in Arvada, off of Indiana, there's going to be, so there's going to be a natural growth of, of, of traffic. Is that sort of what's included in those 2035 figures?
Yes, Dr. Cog figures are, not, not in what's shown.
But not ours? So the reality is probably going to be somewhere in between.
That's right.
Okay.
And again, any improvements, if you talk about additional lanes, we've had this discussion on McCaslin. Additional lanes near that ridge is going to be very expensive. When we, when we start widening that area, then we have major issues, major, major costs. So it's like, we didn't want to go there. And so you're right, we can accommodate some with growth in town, but if growth in the regional area takes place, yeah, we're going to have some issues, but how do you want to handle them? The town board has said we don't want to add additional lanes on McCaslin.
Okay. Quick question over here. First of all, thank you again for an excellent presentation tonight. Getting back to some of the questions that were raised about the, specifically the vision for McCaslin, I was wondering if you could supply some background as to how the staff came up with the, the plan that you did? I mean, I'm aware that there was input from the board, there's been some community input, primarily which arose in the context of the Jefferson Parkway discussion. And as I recall, there was a survey that was done at some point in the, in the past 12 months that solicited some feedback from the community on that. So I'm just curious to know what, which of those things are, you know, if any, did, were taken into account when you came up with the plan?
Well, I think what we had heard, and we, you know, talked about public input, the best, I mean, the most public input we had on transportation issues were during the Jefferson Parkway discussions. We packed the room, and people were giving their opinions about Jefferson Parkway, and we had that debate, do we accommodate regional traffic or not? Should it be a local street, should you have, you know, much lower speed limit? So what we heard is try to discourage the regional traffic, try to, you know, do some traffic calming to slow the speeds down. That's what we had heard during that, that process. And so when we started this process with McCaslin, we said, well, what can we do from a design standpoint to get a, a lower, a lower operating speed? That's, what can we do to change, to change the design of the road? And the concept became out, you know, two concepts, were roundabouts and medians, the medians where we could put some, some horizontal deflection, so we can actually have, you know, curves that are not, you know, 60 mile an hour curves, but they're 45 mile an hour curves. And so you would, you would want to drive slower, because it all just felt like it was a slower facility. So that was really the genesis of the idea behind roundabouts and medians. And then we looked at appropriate locations for the roundabouts, and the one at Rock Creek Parkway seemed to be a good one, because there were a lot of left turns, and the volume is balanced. And the one at Indiana seemed to be a nice entry point, where you, you know, you're coming down, here's, you're entering the town of Superior, and you slow down. So those two, two came about. The one at Colton was there, and then the town center came about, you know, later on during the, the whole town center hearings. So that was kind of the genesis of our thinking as we evolved the process for, for McCaslin.
Okay.
And there were certain areas, like around the ridge, that we don't want to make major improvements. We don't want to put medians on that curve around the ridge, because that slope could be unstable, and, you know, could be major cost to do anything there. So we kind of kept out of certain areas, but there are other areas that we had to ride away, and you could put some wide medians in.
So, and if I'm hearing you correctly, Alex, and tell me if I'm wrong, but the arrival and the threat of the Jefferson Parkway sort of focused the community on the issue of traffic?
Mm-hmm.
And, and the topic of, do we want more? Do we want less? Do we want it to be the same? What do we want? And that's how we got to where we are.
Right, and going back further, when we had the whole issues of growth in town with Verhege, should Verhege develop, and what level, and, you know, they, if Verhege went, we needed four lanes on McCaslin, because just from that development. And so it was like, we don't want, you know, four lanes, that, those discussions were going back, you know, 15 years ago, that we don't want to have major improvements on McCaslin, we don't want to encourage regional traffic by having this, this four-lane arterial. So it goes back to then not to have the lanes. And then the Jefferson Parkway discussions came, and it was like, well, we don't want like the speeds either. So that's kind of the history of how we evolved.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you know, you've probably been around long enough to hear some of those discussions. Do you have other, if you want to chime in on, on those discussions or not? But I mean, that's how we felt, no, no, no more lanes on McCaslin, and then what can we do to slow traffic down?
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Sorry, can I come up?
Sure.
Sorry about that, Michelle Horton, again. One thing I was just thinking about when he was talking about this is, I didn't see a short-term forecast for McCaslin. Again, I wasn't here during that, I saw one in regards to the turnoff near the DDI and stuff like that. Like, what should we do in the interim? And I think that maybe that should really be an integral part of this for some of these more heavily traveled areas. Because even if you are considering doing something like roundabouts, or a combination of roundabouts and lights, the reality is that the costs of the roundabouts are so high, it's going to take so long for the town to implement them. And anything that we're talking about, especially with what you guys are talking about, with the Parkway and stuff like that, sorry, my breathing is really bad due to my surgery, so. But anything that you're talking about in regards to that makes it kind of negligible, because if you're sitting there saying, okay, the Parkway is going to come or not, but not addressing something now, if it comes, we're going to be too late in dealing with it. So you really need to look at what can be done within the next couple of years, or shorter, with this plan, and then have like the long-term goals of, if a roundabout did work at Indiana, or a roundabout worked at Rock Creek, that you would put those in later. But the fact is, they cost, if I'm not mistaken, meetings that we had last year regarding the ridge, I think they're about 12 times the cost of a stoplight. So, so I would really suggest that having a short term for certain things be part of this transportation plan. Thank you.
The only other comment I'll make is, Michelle's observation that by adding a lot of roundabouts, particularly on McCaslin, you know, we may, that may be the source of actually discouraging the Morgul-Bismarck, and, you know, I have, I could have feelings on both sides of that. I see a lot of spandex and skinny tires all the time now in my part of town. And, but the town has been trying to establish an identity with that, and then we'd be turning around and doing something that possibly would just, you know, would cause many, cause it to go away. So we just need to realize there could be a cause and effect of those kinds of things.
I'd like to propose that we kind of fine-tune the summary of comments that we got from last meeting, and kind of have that as our wrap-up to this meeting, if anyone, or if everyone agrees with that.
So we can have any discussion, or is it just?
Are you considering these comments are, I mean? No, I, I was sort of presuming we had some discussion as a...
Let's do it. I was kind of hearing silence, I thought we were ready to move on, but...
I, I didn't have any more questions, and, I mean, I've heard a lot, I was just hoping there'd be some discussion, because there were some comments, and Michelle's got a whole letter that she wrote that, that we've all read and haven't really discussed, and Michelle's letter that she wrote, that, you know, we've heard comments on, but we haven't really had any discussion about what we think of those comments, so.
Let's do it. Okay. Let you lead on.
I'll start, because I, I mean, I'm boiling this down to, and Michelle said this in her, in her email as well, which was that there's a process now that, that Alex has defined that, that will take, take this, take us through a, a public process. I don't feel it's appropriate to make any recommendations at this point. I don't feel it's appropriate to make, to really say anything about this plan to the board from our perspective at this point, because we don't know what the public process is going to hold. I think it's appropriate that we've now been given a presentation, we helped, we, we've assisted and, and, and instigated a change in the process, and made some refinements to the plan from some obvious, you know, what we thought were some glaring things that were missing. But the reality is, there's a, there's a public process that should, that, that this should go through, which we should... which we should be a part of, and should be listening to, as the Planning Commission, and at the end of that public process, be making recommendations based on those, on the process to the Town Board. That's my feeling. Because I don't know if roundabouts is the right thing to do. It was great, I mean, the Morgul Bismarck, it didn't even occur to me, you know, that what impact that would have on the Morgul Bismarck. And we have an entire public process that we want to put in place to help identify those. So, I'm looking for more feedback from this process, before I feel like it would be appropriate to make any recommendations.
And I would agree with that. I think, one of the things I heard tonight was, we've got some facts and figures coming on traffic data, and I think, before we get too in-depth with recommendations on roundabouts in any location, it would be very useful to have those traffic numbers, accounts.
Yeah, just to respond to that, I'm not sure we're taking that out to the public, but, you know, kind of parallel, when we come back to you, we'll kind of have, you know, a more comprehensive analysis of all those intersections, and traffic volumes and level of service. So when we come back, and you, when we talk about this roundabout or that roundabout, you'll have more data than you have now.
Okay.
What, again, what we would like to do, you know, we presented a lot of information, new information, that we'll incorporate when we go out, we're saying, well, here's some ideas, you know, and what are your ideas? You know, can I get reaction? We want to get reaction to the roundabout concept on McCaslin, as well as, you know, 76th Street, and this ultimate plan for Marshall. So we have a lot of these things that we can present, here's our thinking, what do you think? And do you have any other issues that you want us to look at? So, unless you, unless there's something here that you see, like the McCaslin corporate roundabout, I mean, is that something you want to expose?
I just throw it out there. You know? I mean, again, just in the view of saying, there are merits and demerits for all these things, I could throw out another idea of one, it has its merit and it has its demerits.
And, you know, throw it out, because it may cause some reaction, I mean.
But it could also give just some ideas and discussion. Why would that be proposed? Well, because of some of the points I made about access and emergency vehicles and safe passage out of that part of town, that doesn't always force one into the height of the Marshall traffic. But then again, it could be totally disregarded by others, and that would be fine, too. To me, it was just an example of, well, if we're going to talk about one at Christiansen, let's talk about one at Coal Creek and McCaslin, why not?
Yeah, right. Well, it's been a bone of contention that we only had one true exit point out of Superior. I mean, that's been probably a bigger issue than our concern about traffic on Coal Creek Drive, you know, thinking back to the last 15 years. And it was intended that there would be another exit out of original town, it's just that mayhem, forgot about, no, 76, never, that was supposed to come all the way around, right? That was the plan at one point, so.
Well, I can add something, too, because we talked the last meeting, we were talking about, you know, this is going to be a traffic plan that would eventually just be done on a as-needed, or as the road improvements came up, we're going to throw a roundabout here and a traffic light there, and we didn't have a plan. And I brought the point last meeting, I know, about prioritization and phasing, and was there a master plan to the whole concept of the roundabouts and the traffic lights? I mean, we're just throwing a lot of them down on a piece of paper, and we don't know what rhyme and reason this is going to develop. I mean, so a lot of people are going to focus on McCaslin.
Yeah, and I think we heard you, and that's why I think we're going to come back, we're going to, we're going to have a more comprehensive look at all the intersections, and make sure we cover them, and then I think that data will show you, you know, which ones make sense, which are the highest accident rates, or the lowest level of service.
Correct.
And you'll have that data, and we can go forward, and if you want a prioritization of that, that's something that we take a step for it.
I see the merits of both. I mean, I can see, on an as-needed basis, but there has to be some idea of where we're going with this, you know, what we're trying to achieve in the end. I mean, you can do things on a as-funds or as-able basis, but, you know, what are we looking at, 20 years from now, getting all this done? There you go. Are we looking 10 years? Is this going to happen in two years? No. So, that was my biggest concern. I mean, I think we shotgunned a lot of stuff on a piece of paper here the first time we did it. It was pretty good, but we didn't give a lot of thought as to how viable all of it was. I don't think.
Yeah, and are you talking about cost and?
Yeah, cost, cost versus benefit. I'm a cost-benefit guy. I've said enough.
Other comments? Just for the sake of the deliberative process here, and kind of throwing out our two cents worth, it strikes me that what we're trying to accomplish, and I'll just focus on McCaslin, because that's what we've been talking about, it strikes me that what we're trying to accomplish is to strike the appropriate balance. I mean, one balance is, no non-Superior traffic on McCaslin, that's the one extreme. So let's just plow it up, everything south of Indiana to 128.
We can delete that section.
That would be easy. That's one extreme, and the other one is, let's make it a, you know, let's make it a four-lane highway, and with no traffic control devices at all. And I think that, and, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's a group of citizens, identifiable citizens in the community, that are of the view that roundabouts, well, you know, it'd be nice to slow the traffic, that doesn't go far enough. And what we really need are streetlights, and traffic lights, and things like that. And I think there's another identifiable group that thinks, no, we want to move cars through there as fast as we can. And it strikes me that part of the staff's challenge, and why it would be perhaps valuable to the Town Board to hear from us, is that we've got to balance competing interests. And we've got to come up with something that everybody can more or less live with. And I think it's in that mindset that we ought to, we ought to be deliberative about what's being proposed. And obviously, we don't have the final say, the people have the final say.
My only concern is, we're only starting to get educated on this process, and the public has not been educated on this process. That's a challenge in and of itself, because getting people to pay attention to what's going on in town until it is truly right in their backyard is very difficult. So, making sure we have a process, you know, that's lengthy enough to give everybody as much opportunity as we possibly can, I think is extremely important. There are elements that we have to consider. We're building regional draw commerce, that's our whole basis for our funding. But yet, we don't want to allow the region to come down from 128, in some discussions. So, I mean, all those things have to get put into perspective, and hopefully, through that process, everybody becomes educated, so that, you know, we can have some really good discussions about what we think is important. And, you know, yes, we're going to impact the Morgul Bismarck, yes, we're going to, you know, we might impact the flow of traffic from our that, which is going to be huge and growing, and here we are, depending on our commerce as a regional draw approach. But yet, we want to block off the biggest part of our region. So how do we compromise? Is it, you know, roundabouts with nice flow, but slow? Do we narrow the roads? You know, do you still allow the flow? Do you put in traffic lights to discourage? We know, I think that's what we all need to discuss.
And my only point, to your point, Bob, my only point is that I would agree that part of the discussion is, we don't want people coming from the south. That would be a legitimate point, if one of the options on the table were, plow up McCaslin, south of 128. But nobody's advocating that. What we're advocating is, should a vehicle traveling from 128 to 36, you know, it takes a minute and 23 seconds to travel that distance, I suppose? Is it okay if it takes a minute and 43 seconds? I think that's the question, really, and that's the trade-off. And are you going to lose commerce, if, whatever the time differential is, I'm sure we can be precise about this, but it, that really is the discussion, I think.
Has there been any conversation on these charging stations, as far as your electrical vehicle situation goes?
Charging stations for existing vehicles that we have now? We have a charging station here, we have a charging station at Community Park. The town is currently exploring grant opportunities to install more charging stations throughout town, as funding becomes available. So, yeah, as, you know, as we're working on that now. If you have feedback regarding, you know, where you'd like them, or some considerations or ideas, we'd be open to that.
Would you accommodate golf carts?
Or you mean?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're trying to encourage electric vehicles, alternative energy, and I applaud Superior for being proactive, but some communities are struggling with getting that initiative on board with their citizens. So some of them are way out in front of the use or demand. And just curious as to whether anybody's given that any thought, as to how we can do it differently.
I can speak to that just a little bit, that the state of Colorado, and that, I think it's the office of, is it Economic Development? In any case, they're offering up grant opportunities, both for.
Regional Air Quality Council.
It's the Regional Air Quality Council, thank you. Opportunities to get, to add charging stations, so for communities who don't have any, that certainly puts it on the list for them. And then for communities who are interested in adding electric vehicles to their fleet, which is something else that the town is looking to do. I know that Ford, in addition to Nissan and other car companies, have more electric cars, and hybrid electric cars coming out on the market in 2013, and they're hoping that demand will shift more with more cars on the market. I don't know if that helps.
But again, you know, it's the concept of, do you stick the electric car, the electric vehicle of any kind, in your outlet, at your garage? Or are you going to do the service station, charging station concept? I mean, I, you know, that's what I'm hearing nationwide, I've heard some studies on it, it's pretty fascinating, it's blowing up. It's not exactly people running in, sticking in the outlet of their garage.
Right.
Charging the car up. That's not exactly how it works. I was just curious, because I know we're kind of doing it, but to me, you got to embrace it, or you just got, you know, we're kind of, that's the whole problem, the auto manufacturers are having right now, too. They can't figure out how to sell them, because it's kind of stuck in limbo, United States, and a big oil and gas interest, too. Thank you.
Okay, any further comment? So what I've heard, go ahead.
I just was just wondering, when will be the soonest that we're going to have the committee meeting for discussing the transportation plan? I mean, that we all agree that it's important to have that, so is there like a schedule?
So January, I don't know, have we got a date yet, in January, or not?
We're going to get past here first.
Yes.
Yeah, and as Bob kind of mentioned, how challenging it can be to get people to come out and be engaged, I don't know how we want to try to contact and reach different people, but I know that one of the things in my part of town is that, if it's just kind of announced, well, we're going to talk about transportation, that's not going to get them too excited. But if you say, we're talking about improvements on 76th, we're talking about, you know, access regarding Marshall, Coal Creek, whatever, and put something a little concrete out there, so they go, oh, or like when you talked about the, what are roads designed for, in terms of speed, versus their actual speed? And, for example, in Sagamore, are, because of the density and the narrowness of the streets, we're probably designed, truly designed, for 15 miles an hour, and yet it's posted at 25. And we even have people exceeding that, which is just downright scary. So there will be people who would want to understand more about that, because people have even asked me, can we get something here? Because we're scared, we've got so many kids, and inappropriate speeds on our little streets. So, by somehow putting something out there, that among things to be discussed will be this, that electric vehicles, whatever, could catch their eye, would be good.
By the way, another thing that came up with the, our discussions on flood control was the Third Avenue Bridge.
Yeah.
And it raises some transportation considerations, and maybe we'll put that in. Third Avenue Bridge, take the Second Avenue Bridge out, you have two bridges, one bridge. Some controversial items to.
Right.
That they actually come out and learn, you know, what's going on, and get feedback on that as well.
I mean, it's by sense that these options, I mean, all these options should be thrown out there, I mean, that is exactly what's going to get people fired up to come.
Right, that's why. Get some stuff out that is way out, and maybe it'll charge some people up, and they'll come up, and then we get some real good feedback on it.
Great, great.
I do think we've got a much better plan and a much better process in place here than we had at the last meeting, and so I appreciate the efforts towards that direction. So I think we could leave here tonight with, you know, with one of two approaches, the one of, let's, let's kind of watch this through the process, listen more before this board makes any recommendations, or we could leave here, making some more specific recommendations. And perhaps, a good approach would be to maybe take a straw poll, and see if, see how this commission tonight feels about either making some more specifics, à la the comments from last meeting, as the outline, versus hearing more public comment, and really digesting more. I'm beginning to kind of lean more towards the wait-and-gather-more-information camp, myself, so I'm just curious what, if you want to have some discussion on that idea.
Well, I thought we might just inform them as to the kinds of things we're talking about, as like food for thought, and just say, yeah, I mean, the process has to take place, but in the meantime, we've been bouncing these things around, which we think are significant factors to be considered, or some such label, and just put it in front of them on that basis. So you're not really making a recommendation, but you're talking, you're basically telling, this is what we've been chewing on.
That way they know we've actually been talking about.
Well, that also.
As opposed to just spending two nights here eating cookies.
And here's the result of all of our chewing, is that we're, and just sort of give it to them, and let them say, see that we're, okay, we've already worked this one over, but this one might need some more work, and then we still have to present it to the public, and then how do we get it out to the public, like you and I were talking about hypothetically beforehand?
Yes.
Just put it that way.
And I agree with that, maybe, I mean, we could even, we could finalize it or tighten it up a little bit, and make some recommendations.
For sure.
I mean, you know, say that, you know, we shoot on this for a couple of meetings, how it's made changes to the existing plan, that, you know, for the purpose of going into a public process, we agree with. You know, not that we recommend this plan necessarily, but we feel like it's at an appropriate point, along with some other comments we've heard, because I'd sure like Morgul Bismarck comment to be, you know, included as it moves forward, and whatever else we've, you know, added, that, you know, isn't included in the plan currently, onto the board, that, you know, this kind of package deal of comments and existing plan, we agree this is a great starting point for a community process, and our recommendation is that we move forward with the public process, and bring it back to the Planning Commission at the end of that, so that we can make a final recommendation.
Plus, you're bringing more information, too, right, Alex?
I'll be bringing more information back to you, when you see it again.
Right.
What I was, when we go out, you know, we could do, you know, an open house, or we could do, I like to educate the public, too, you know, you've seen the roundabout presentation, you've seen a lot of information that I have here, and I could kind of structure it like, present, you know, a lot of the concepts in the plan, but then have it open-ended, you know, what are the traffic concerns that you had? You know, we have a lot of options at boards and so forth for specific areas, have a McCaslin vision plan there. vision plan there, but have a presentation, you know, explaining a lot of these concepts and then asking for feedback from whoever tends on both the alternatives we present plus anything else they have.
You know, when we were doing those comprehensive plan sessions, I think it was very useful to have these posters up that people could then write their own comments and put it there. Sometimes people would be shy about comments, but to write it and put it there and know that they could kind of step away from it, but that the comment would be observed. And it's visual, right? Because what we're going to end up changing is rather, it becomes visual. So, people can actually comment and then there can be that facilitation that, okay, let's see, let's see what this comment was, let's see what that comment was. So, I really recommend that as part of the public process. It worked really well in the comm plan. Or, excuse me, Town Center. I'm mixing it. Well, all of us.
It was all of it.
It was all of us.
They were bringing it next.
It was a blur.
Form a motion of some sort, or do we just, so if we've pulled together enough information to, do you want us to create a statement, Fred? What's the-
Well, yeah, I think it's up to you. I mean, we do have the summary of comments that you all have. I don't know if there's, there may be some things that you may want to add to or whatever.
Do you want to, can you review what you've written down?
Well-
Alex has a slide. Do you have a slide from the comments? One more. There you go. Thanks.
So, there those, so a few things have come out today.
Subtitles.
Yeah, I think this serves as a good starting point. I think we should all just kind of check that list, make sure we're still in agreement with that, and then add additional points that we've talked about tonight and-
You can add on to that.
A couple of them that I've heard are, we like the, we like the positioning of the plan as it's now ready to go out to a more public process and support that direction.
I'm a little concerned about, I mean, from what we've heard today about whether we're actually saying we're in favor of roundabouts. I mean, I'm in favor of something, but not, you know, with, at these intersections to accommodate the appropriate flow, but I don't know at this point whether I agree that's roundabouts.
Maybe we should hypothetically just say roundabout, cost of a roundabout is four times that of a signal or whatever the number is.
Four times.
And then, you know, cost benefit evaluation would be considered or something like, some kind of a bullet point like that.
Want to build underneath it, you know, that Michelle mentioned about the impact of, you know, could, will this impact the Morkel Bismarck?
Well, definitely.
Well, just think, I mean-
And traffic numbers. I mean, to me, traffic numbers are key to saying, is this a good investment or not?
Are we still saying that we're generally in favor of traffic control at those intersections? Just the open question being-
That's a good, yeah, I think that's a statement.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable with a statement like that.
Okay, so change that from roundabouts to traffic control. Okay.
He's more neutral about the solution.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree.
The second bullet point sort of speaks to that as well.
And some of what we're doing, the whole traffic plan impacts the future economic viability of business and Superior. It's, it's the way it is.
Yes.
We got people saying, don't get regional, but they want your money. Bring your taxes.
You can only come this way if you spend money. It's just not going to work.
And I'll tell you, with what you showed, Alex, I didn't bring it up earlier, but it's sinking in that, that when you come off Highway 36 and like the way I would normally proceed, I could use that far right lane and come on around and be at Marshall Road because I'm not trying to jockey over, but now the idea of a slip ramp further back to bring people to the marketplace, I think people are going to go nuts being held, you'll have two and three lanes of traffic being held, waiting for a green light when in the past they've been able to make a right turn essentially on red, that it's not really at an intersection. But I think that's really going to affect the way people feel about coming and shopping there. I think we've got to be really careful about that option that fully stops traffic even if you're just proceeding to the right. So, just an idea. But at the same time, the great challenge there is to keep it from being the mess it is today where it's the jockeying around. If people actually followed the signs, there wouldn't be that jockeying around, but nobody has ever enforced what the signage actually instructs, that the far right lane is only to be if you're going to be proceeding onto Marshall, and if you're going to be proceeding on McCaslin, you're not supposed to be doing that. So, that was part of it, is we created it but never enforced it, and so it is that constant jockeying back and forth. But anyway, we may want to consider that because again, as we're trying to consider a transportation plan and the economic aspects of it, it could be little things like that that turn out to be bigger issues in the future.
So, on that third bullet point, it might be better to change that from generally in favor of media and something a little broader that speaks to some of the concerns we've talked about tonight, which is balancing traffic control versus economic development reasons.
And viability, just what we even have now.
So, that would be a change to the third bullet point.
Take that sub-bullet point out. I think it would be helpful, yes, so take the sub-bullet point out. I think it would be helpful to inform our discussion to get travel times down, you know. What's the travel time if we do nothing to McCaslin from 128 to Town Center? What's the travel time if we're all in with all the traffic control devices? And what's the difference? I mean, if we're talking less than a minute, I think that might change the analysis.
But can we measure what you're supposed to be doing versus what's actually happening? Because that's the contention. I mean, if everybody, if everybody was, you know, following the speed limit all the way down McCaslin, we wouldn't be having conversations about traffic control on McCaslin. The problem is that the road looks like you can do 60-plus miles an hour all the way down, and your travel time in that case is going to be, you know-
That's enforced by law.
Not as significant as people think.
Put in rumble strips. I mean, when I have rumble strips, I slow down.
Instinctive reaction.
They're straightforward.
I mean, there's perception of what, or activity, there's actuality, what, you know, driving five, 10, 15, 20 miles over the speed limit, being forced into a situation where it's uncomfortable to speed much more than five miles an hour with the speed limit, and what's your travel time when you do that?
Well, I could just see a situation where you could get so busy on McCaslin that you could have this bumper-to-bumper traffic being slowed and copped to death, and everybody's crawling down McCaslin to get to 36 as opposed to the old way, we just drove there, you know, and everybody kind of got through it, you know? And I don't know. You know, it's going to be on volume also.
If you ever driven 93 through Golden at peak hours, I mean, that stretches two lanes and then has 26,000 vehicles a day.
Yep.
So, that's the kind of feel when you get over 20,000. It's, you know, in a two-lane, there's no lights and you're bumper-to-bumper. So, that's the type of thing we could model. We're not quite at that volume, but I mean, that's-
No, not now, but I'm just saying, I could see it happening with the development that's coming inevitable.
I just think some ideas will come out of this public process that we may not have even thought of considering, so.
On our fourth bullet point there, are we good with leaving that, or would we just like to see some changes to that bullet point?
I'm not, I don't know. I'm not ready to make a recommendation on roundabouts.
The first bullet point sort of addressed it indirectly, I mean-
Yes, we've talked about, yeah.
We softened that a lot and just kind of-
Yes, so maybe let's pull that fourth bullet point out.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, we've got so many bullets that are about roundabouts that this is the issue. This transportation plan shouldn't just be about roundabouts. It's got to be much broader. So, the fact that we've already got two or three talking about roundabouts, enough already.
And then the last bullet point, we'd like to see a level of surveys graphic. We've talked about that, so that's, I think we're good.
That's good.
Other points we'd like to see-
They accommodate original town concerns well enough in the-
In the original, there was nothing. So, that's where, again, I'm encouraging that the things we were able to talk about this evening that Alex brought forth, that starts to, you know, bring in some other elements in other parts of town because, you know, those things are not just done. I mean-
So, then maybe our next bullet point, or, I mean, I don't know if this is going to be a list of comments, maybe it's a list of comments, but one that should start to carry the weight is we're in favor of this community meetings process.
Yes.
Specifically addressing, you know, in meeting one, things on this side of town, and meeting two, the roundabouts and the whole McCaslin corridor vision in Rock Creek.
I mean, there have been, you know, changes down here, right at Coal Creek Drive, that I, living here as long as I have now, I was never part of a public process that said, wow, we're going to take out your light, your one egress to get out to, you know, northbound McCaslin. That wasn't really broadly, I think, maybe an original town, but-
There was, I mean, back then, there was no great public process. There was no great, there was a lot of work being done to get the word out, fortunately.
But then we ended up with a rather narrow, you know, turn in, right turn only, and then even recently, we went from having a lane that was going to be right turn only, so they'd be turning on to Rock Creek or Coal Creek Drive, and therefore, we could safely at least egress to the south, and now even we compete for that lane as people are starting to pick up speed and come on down McCaslin, and we don't even have that turn-on lane that is helping us get out even there. So, and that was not, to my knowledge, part of any larger process that said, do people want this? How would this feel? Because now it doesn't feel very safe sometimes just trying to take a right turn out here. So, there's still stuff to discuss down for this part of town.
I want to be careful getting a discussion about some of these details, but you come up and you bring these things up, and I was involved in those processes. I know why those were done. So, I want to be careful that we're not communicating to the public that this, that these things weren't considered by staff and town and the public process, because they were. There was a safety issue with that intersection at the time where people were plowing up through there even though the lines were in place to ask them not to, and it was a much bigger safety issue the way it was. So, that was discussed, and some of these things have been. So, I want to be careful what we don't-
I didn't hear about it. I've been here.
So, I understood, understood, but I, I mean, I did. That doesn't mean everybody did. That doesn't mean everybody did or everybody didn't. I get that, but if we're, we just want to be cautious as a commission that we're going to pick on, that we're picking on specific elements of things that were done in town, that's all. Because I'm sitting here going, should we have these discussions? Because I was there and I did see this, and I know why it was done, and I was paying attention, but I understand that not everybody does, which is why I'm in favor of community meetings that are well-publicized and, you know, we do our best because you're going to, you know, three years from now, we're going to hear somebody, you know, we're going to go through a six-month process, and five years from now, you're going to have people sitting here and say, well, I never heard anything about that, you know.
So, it's constantly evolving.
Right, okay.
So, as we, as we finish up our little list of bullet points, Alex in the open, you had, you proposed some new concepts or some interim concepts on Marshall-McCaslin Triple Left, and it might be a good opportunity for the board to, for the commission to weigh in on our thoughts on what Alex proposed to us on the interim designs on the Triple Left.
I mean, considering I'd be using it all the time, I think I'd still need to even study it. I mean, it was good to bring that up to show that there continue to be considerations of how to help some of the flow down here. That was the intention of my comment. It wasn't necessarily to say, now let's examine this specific, you know, proposal tonight. I think, you know, we can just let it be part of that public discussion and one of those items that could be illustrated so that people could go, oh, yeah, okay, I see that. And again, the nuances of how does it fit with the future DDI, and that's where I think for a lot of us, we'd still want to sit down and really consider what's going on and the flow with the DDI and things like that. And that could be a completely different, different discussion and-
I just wanted to get any, anyone that had any particular strong feelings one way or the other about it, just to continue to give feedback.
I think it's appropriate for it to be on the list, yes, along with the roundabout at Coal Creek for that matter, I, you know, and the Third Street Bridge, I mean, I think those are all.
The, and the 76th Street, you also talked about 76th Street. Should we do anything different there? I think that should be included on the list as well. Okay. Any other comments, any other things for that list? Okay. Should we close out of transportation plan going once?
Twice.
Okay. Let's move on to agenda item number six, approval of work plan for 2013.
Okay, last meeting, December 4th, I gave you a red line. I do have copies of a red line if you'd rather look at that versus the cleaner copy that still needs some cleanup. So, I can pass these around. And the purpose of continuing is to give everyone a chance to noodle over if they had anything else they wanted to add to this list. If not, we can go with what we've got, which are these four bullet points remaining.
Thanks for doing the red line. Commission loves red lines.
I know. So, we're open to any additional points. We've got on the list, review and comment on major capital improvement projects, which includes items such as road infrastructure projects, new functional plans, exactly what we've done tonight. Ongoing update and discussion regarding future town plans for the Town Center project. That plan development was approved by Town Board, and we, there could be movement in the next year, so that's something we wanted to make sure we kept on the list. Ongoing update and discussion regarding proposed Jefferson Parkway. As information comes to us, we'll bring it to you. And then, I think it's more minor, Fred, but you can clarify, land code cleanup to address some inconsistencies. I found some things in there when I started working here, just some references that are different, and I know that, I think Phil and Fred might have a few things on their list, and if there's anything else in the land use code, just some minor cleanup that we'd like to bring back to you. Is there anything else you want to add to the list?
I might suggest we put the transportation plan, since it's turned into more of a-
You want an separate bullet point versus functional plan?
Does it just fit under new functional plans, I guess?
We can do, I can do, we can certainly add it as a transportation plan.
I don't know.
Interesting.
Okay.
Just maybe to encourage all of us to participate in the public process and the meetings and do more than just wait for it to come back.
Yeah, and, you know, and planning commission meetings are public, open to the public, and the public is encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Any other comments?
The only one I came up with was review and comment on proposed development projects and amendments. It's what we do anyway.
We do it anyway.
So, maybe that's not necessary.
It's kind of an ongoing, but we can add it. It's a, it's a lot to do. Anything else for the-
So, with those revisions, we, should we make a motion to, a motion to approve and-
And we'll take them to the town.
Make a motion to approve the work plan with the amount of changes that we've provided?
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner McCool, second by Commissioner Ricker. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, staff announcements miscellaneous.
Really don't have anything to report. On December 4th, I did mention to you that we've been approached to, and the town managers asked us to bring before the planning commission a proposed amendment. It's a smaller amendment to the Superior Marketplace. Chase Bank wants to put in a walk-up ATM. I'm not convinced they're going to meet their deadlines for the next meeting, or so we'll see. So I'll keep you posted. It doesn't look like we're going to have a meeting on, would it be January 2nd? So the...
It would be actually January 1st.
January 1st. So if, if we have a meeting in January, it will be the 15th. If not, we'll let, we'll notify you. But that's really all I have, and Happy New Year.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Can you give the commission a summary of what the Town Board did with the comprehensive plan?
Sure. You want to do that?
Can you crack it out? I'll see if I...
Okay, I'll take first crack. We started the process in April. We had a total of eight meetings. Four were joint meetings open to the public with the planning commission and Town Board, four community meetings. We brought the comprehensive plan back to the Town, to the planning commission in September. You passed it with a few comments, which we carried forward to the Town Board in October. And I'm trying to think how many meetings we had.
We had three board meetings on the comp plan. One was short-circuited because electricity went out.
That's right. We might have had two. But they did pass it on December 10th, and staff is going through fine-tuning, basically just checking things like of, for, you know, English grammar, spelling, making sure everything's clean, and we're going to try and get it printed up here in January for distribution.
I would just say that before, you have, you know, some substantive changes. One of the bigger ones was that the transportation section was made much, much more general because we have, we're working on a more detailed transportation plan. So that was a major change that they made. And then there was some words missing. And there was a fair amount of discussion about the types of land use in each of the different opportunity areas. So, so that, some of those locations were changed, or some of the residential aspects of those opportunities that were eliminated. For one, for example, was one of the Richmond piece down at McCaslin. So there was some substantive changes on some of the opportunity areas. That's where most of the discussion was, to be quite frank, in terms of the comp plan, was around those opportunity areas.
And we, we folded in the Town Center development. It's folded in with a little more detail than the previous comp plan, which we have more to work with. So hopefully that answers.
Okay, yes, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Okay, meetings adjourned.
Thank you.